We'll start off with doing a roll call. Okay, go ahead Val.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Here.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Here. Okay, can we move to the Pledge of Allegiance? We'll put our right hand over our heart. And repeat after me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, let's see here. Oh, I'm sorry you guys, I guess, I guess we did the roll call of the members first and then we did the pledge allegiance, that the pledge allegiance should have came first and then the call to the order of our Planning Commission, it's August 11th and it is 6:10 a.m. Um, the next item is approval of the minutes for July 14th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Ernie Sparza?
I second it, I second this, is Weisenberger?
Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any public comments?
No, no public comments sir.
Okay, alright, move on to new business?
I'm sorry, Vice Chair Abrego, could we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Batista?
Oh yes, yes. Can we get a, um, can we get a, excuse me, can we get a, gosh you guys, I'm sorry. Can we get a motion to excuse Luis Batista?
I'll motion to excuse Commissioner Luis Batista.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
That was Gutierrez to first, first.
Yeah, that was, there's a.
Okay, and then Ernie seconded.
Yes.
Okay, roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yeah. Okay, new business? And public hearings, what can we start, new business? Conditional use permit number 889. Uh, it looks like we have a request by Alden Eagle LLC, um, American Film Industry Videos of the Installation Vehicle Suspension Systems in existing 3,200 square foot warehouse on Garfield Avenue. Conditional use permit 889.
Uh, thank you Chair Abrego. Um, as you stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a business that films instructional videos on the installation of vehicle suspension systems and this is at 15155 Garfield Avenue. And Associate Planner Rena Shetzel will go over the request with you.
Good evening Honorable Chair Members of the Commission. Thank you John, yes, as stated, this is a conditional use permit for Alden Eagle LLC Doing Businesses Alden America. They're proposing to go into an existing one, uh, an existing warehouse building at 15155 Garfield Avenue. And as background, um, the application is for, uh, the filming of the installation of vehicle suspension systems in an existing 3,200 square foot warehouse suite, as shown on the first slide. Again, the address is 15155 Garfield Avenue. It's within the M2 or Heavy Manufacturing Zone, which does allow for vehicle uses such as filming in warehouses and does require CUP. Um, the suite is within an existing 35,000 square foot warehouse complex on Garfield Avenue, as seen also in the first picture. Um, this is a picture looking west on Gar, west on Garfield Avenue. Uh, the, the proposed applicant is going in the far south corner unit. Um, this is just two shots of the complex, the 35,000 square foot warehouse complex. As aerial, uh, the property is bounded by Somerset Boulevard to the north, Garfield of course to the east, Adams to the south, and then Texaco to the west. Uh, the property is highlighted in yellow, uh, and the actual suite is circled on the bottom corner you'll see. This is the site plan as submitted by the applicant, he will be the corner, the applicant will be in the corner unit. There are approximately, um, eight tenants, um, in the front and then in the rear, there's about five or six tenant spaces. And there's a little office space in the building and again, it's 3,200 square feet. On the right, you'll see current pictures of the exact location where the, where the applicant will be located. And you'll note that the property has already been repaved, or recently repaved and the building is recently refreshed. The applicant typically works on classic cars, as shown on the right, which is a sample of the video that will be posted at, uh, for the instructional, for instructional purposes. The applicant, um, hours typically are 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. Monday to Friday. All vehicles will be stored in the building, there will be no outdoor storage as according to the CUP and no outdoor work. Uh, these are some pictures from the applicant's website, the bottom one is the coil suspension systems that they install and the, to the right, you'll see actual YouTube videos that have been posted, uh, to educate, uh, classic car buffs how to install. As stated, the property has already been, uh, improved with, uh, with pavement and the building refreshed, however, as standard conditions of approved, for improvement were requiring one bike rad, one bike rack, um, and the replacement of shade tree, shade trees along the south elevation of the building in the planner area, as pictured here, that were recently taken out. Um, there's a chain link fence on the north entry and staff is recommending that, like the chain link fence that you see in the bottom left, or excuse me, the wrought iron gate that you see, that the chain link fence be replaced to match the wrought iron gate. With that, staff recommends that the Planning Committee, Commission adopt Resolution PC 20027 and approve CUP 889. And the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant is, is available for questions if you need me to call him, as well as I am happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see here, this, this is a public hearing? So do we have anyone that is in favor or that is opposed of this conditional use permit, number 889?
Uh, no, no comments in favor.
Okay, so then we need a motion to close the pub, or are there any questions from our fellow commissioners?
Uh, this is Ernie, I don't have any.
Okay.
None for Weisenberger?
Gutierrez?
No, no questions from my part, thank you.
Good, okay, close the, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, this is Ernie, I'll, uh, motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, Ernie, second five.
This is Gutierrez, I'll second that.
Thank you Gutierrez. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Okay, now we need a motion to adopt Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20027, approving the request by Alden Eagle LLC.
I will, I will move that, uh, request, this is Weisenberger.
Weisenberger, okay. Give me a second.
This is Gutierrez, I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next item, three, condition, oh, go ahead John, are we good?
Yes, we're good.
Okay, conditional, conditional use permit number 890, a request by Dunbar Paramount LLC to operate as a wholesale distribution and online retail sales business at 7,300 Somerset Boulevard in the M1 Light Manufacturing Zone.
Uh, thank you Chair Abrego. Uh, as you stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a wholesaler and distributor and also online retail sales of clothing at 7300 Somerset Boulevard and Planning Intern Erica Barbero will handle this item.
Thank you John, uh, good evening Chair and Commissioners. Uh, so tonight I will be presenting to you conditional use permit 890 located at 7,300 Somerset Boulevard by Dunbar Paramount Associates, or I'm sorry, Dunbar Paramount LLC.
Okay.
Okay, so the request is, uh, to open a wholesale distribution center and online retail sales in the M1 Light Manufacturing Zone. The hours of operation will be 8:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. Monday through Friday and they will have 35 employees on site. The new property owner has two businesses that will be operating out of this location, JJ Perfection and Nine X's. They're expected to receive 10 containers of merchandise monthly and, uh, estimated 15 shipments outgoing weekly. As demonstrated here, you can see some examples of the product that they'll be selling, uh, to the general public. Here you'll see an aerial shot of 7,300 Somerset Boulevard, uh, the property is outlined in blue and the building is in the red. And here you'll see the outside of the building looking from Somerset Boulevard, uh, it was recently painted by, uh, the last, um, property owner. Applicant will be required to plant shade trees to complement the brand new landscape. And here you'll see, uh, the building looking west. Next slide demonstrates the site plan of the warehouse. And, oops. Excuse me, I'm sorry, one second.
Give us just a minute here.
Yeah, no problem you guys.
Okay. Okay, so the recommended action is, uh, to approve conditional use permit 890, uh, along with Resolution 20028. Uh, applicant is on standby in the event that there are any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much, this is a public hearing, so if we have anyone that's in favor or opposed, do we have any?
Uh, no, Commission Chair, uh, Abrego, no, nobody in favor or opposed.
Okay. Any questions from our fellow commissioners?
This is Ernie, I don't have any.
None for Weisenberger?
This is Gutierrez, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, very good. Uh, this is, um, public hearing, so can I get a motion to close, um, the public hearing please?
I will move that, this is Weisenberger.
Second please.
Uh, this is Gutierrez, I'll, I'll second that.
Gutierrez, second.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next, is, um, is, to adopt the Planning Commission Resolution Number PC 20028, providing request by Dunbar Paramount LLC to operate a wholesale distribution. Can I get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve, this is Ernie, I make, I make a motion to approve, uh, conditions permit number 890 with Dunbar Paramount LLC.
Thank you Ernie, second please.
And I, and I will, I will second that, this is Weisenberger.
Thank you Weisenberger. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Next item on the list is number four, General Plan Amendment Number 20-1, a request by Sierra, Durage, Sierra, um, a bold, bold, to change the land use designation of the general plan, land use map from commercial to multifamily residential for properties on the north side of Somerset Boulevard between Indiana Avenue and 8439 Somerset Boulevard.
Yes, um, Mr. Chair, uh, the next two items relate to a general plan amendment and a zone change on the north side of Somerset Boulevard between Indiana Avenue and 8439 Somerset Boulevard and Assistant Planning Director John King will give you the details.
Thank you John, thank you, Commission Chair Abrego and Commissioners. So we're doing, uh, two for one, so we're gonna have first the, well, kinda combining the general plan amendment and zone change, just like John mentioned, um, the slides will be kinda be interspersed and then you'll open up at the end, separate, um, you'll, you'll take separate votes for the, the two items. And this, this is a photo, so if you're standing at, um, Somerset in Indiana, you're looking northeast, this is what you see, so you, you see homes, it looks like, like a regular residential neighborhood, but it's, it's actually zoned CM, Commercial Manufacturing, and on the general plan, the general plan is, uh, designated commercial. So the, we're doing the general, so first you look at the general plan, general plan is the, um, the vision for how the city is to be, in terms of land use. And the general plan kinda looks ahead, um, 10, 15, 20 years from when it's adopted. The general plan was most recently updated, comprehensively updated in 2007. And then the zoning actually implements the general plan, so general plan's the vision, zone, the zone is kinda the nuts and bolts and how, our day to day, um, you know, what we do with, with planning. So we're looking at, um, updating both and it's the properties on the north side of Somerset, again between Indiana, almost all the way to Downey, but except, one exception is the gas station on that corner, the, you know, where the Arco Station is. That one's probably, you know, the history of gas stations, once there are gas stations, usually they, for the most part, they typically stay that way for, so not looking to, to change that, but all the other, uh, properties on that north side. With your recommendation, it would go on to the, um, the city councils, um, for the general plan change, land use map change, that would be a resolution to the city council for the zone change, that would be changed by ordinance, um, so this first Tuesday of September. The next slide is a, um, shows each of these parcels from Indiana to Downey and all in red, so that, again, the exception is the, the gas station at Somerset and Downey, it's on the north side, and there's a, a summary for each of the properties, um, each of the seven properties, and you can see they all, they all have housing. What is interesting is, well, the one property that's a little different, 8427, which is kind of in the middle of the block, it's mixed use, it has a, uh, building in the front that's a combination beauty salon and house. It's not showing on here, since, since this photo was taken, there's been a garage constructed in the back, you might, you might have seen, always has a big boat parked in front of it. Um, so yeah, it's very residential, as you can see, um, they all have one unit, housing unit, one house per property, except for the one at the corner, the northeast of Indiana and Somerset, it's the smallest property by a little bit, but it has three units. Wanna make one correction, I found out today from the property owner, um, actually the applicant, uh, he lives at, uh, 8407 Somerset, so the second over from Indiana, it says rental, he informed me that he actually lives there, so it's owner occupied, it's just the, on the official records, it says Bellflower, um, he said that he doesn't live in Bellflower anymore, he's there on the property. And the next few slides are, um, next couple show the, um, photos of each property. Um, so the top one, 15016, you'll see one of the residents from that property, just watching, looking out, um, the middle photo has two, um, two properties on there, 8407 and 8415 Somerset Boulevard, uh, and the bottom, 8421. And then on the next slide, 8427 Somerset, that's the one with the, uh, beauty salon, you can see on the left part. Um, 8433, it's the, there's a stucco front with the bay windows, uh, 8439 has, I think it's wood siding there. So, yeah, good mix, different styles, there, these homes have been around for many years, probably predating, um, cityhood in 1957. Next few slides are a series of maps, so, um, the first slide is, is land use, so this, just to show what's going on in terms of uses, what's, what everyone's doing there on these properties, so in, in red is the commercial, just gonna point that really quick, so that's the gas station, at the, on the south, there's that little beauty salon, Jimenez I think, um, and then at, down, southeast of Downey and Somerset is that vacant lot, we're just calling that commercial, cause it's a zone for commercial. And, um, so for the most part, the other colors are residential, so it's very residential area, the darker color is multiple family residential, so there's, um, more than a unit, more than one unit, the lighter yellow is single family, there's only one unit on there. The next one is, says, uh, existing general plan land use designation, uh, so that whole block is the red, the red signifies commercial, so that's how it is now, and the, the proposed one, the next one says proposed general plan land use designation, so this is, so the proposal is to bring down, and to extend the existing multiple family residential southward, with the exception of the, uh, the gas station. And then as, the next couple are zoning, existing and proposed, so for the existing, you can see it's a, uh, the, a purple color, purple meaning representing, uh, commercial manufacturing, and, uh, you can see how it kinda stands out, well, and the next one's proposed, then again, bringing down that residential. Little background on the history, so the city, Paramount became official city in 57, the zoning and, and continued, in 57, continued using the county land use plans and zoning until 1962, 1962, city comes up, came up with its own, um, zoning plan and zoning map, and ever since then, it's been zoned commercial. So, um, it's kinda interesting, ever since 57, 62, it's maintained that character, the residential character, so at this point, it kinda makes sense to, to just kind of realize it's probably not gonna change to commercials, let's just go with this, um, idea to, to go with the flow really. Outreach, so in terms of outreach, we wanted to, um, since this is a big change, we wanted to make sure that the property owners were on board, we did a written survey, um, there were no negative responses, and then, um, for this meeting, uh, we mailed out public hearing notices to property owners and tenants within those properties and all around within 500 feet, um, like all applications, and if this goes on to the city council next month, then we'll do the same thing, um, a second time, and let, just let them know, hey, there's a meeting, you're welcome to, uh, contribute to the meeting or ask questions. Discussions, this is what I mentioned, zoning is adopted in 62 and has been unchanged. Now, the general plan has, came up in late 60s, early 70s and corresponded with the zoning, the general plan has either been commercial or business park through those years, um, so that, that matched, but now, um, admitting, acknowledging that it's a residential character, probably not gonna change, um, it'd be a good, we think it would be a good idea, we're, uh, we were in support. By changing it, it would do a few things that we think are positive things, uh, one would be to allow for traditional loans, uh, lenders, as of now, with the properties being what's called legal non-conforming, or basically those houses don't meet today's rules, they're, they're grandfathered is another word, um, it's hard to get loans, lenders don't want to lend on something that's in the wrong zone, basically. Um, so if you make this change, city council approves it, it becomes official, um, the residents would be able to, the property owners would be able to, um, take equity, more easily take equity out, more easily refinance and more easily transfer to, to actually sell to, on the open market, rather than relying on inheritance or, um, uh, some non-traditional type of lending situation. And finally, it would eliminate the linear strip commercial development, you know, we have some strip development here, these are some narrow lots and it might not make the most sense and it could be fragmented through the years. So with that, we have a couple recommended actions, the first is General Plan Amendment Number 21, to adopt Resolution Number PC 20030, recommending the council adopt a resolution changing the land use designation to multiple family residential in this area. Second is the zone change, zone change number 236, adopting Resolution PC 20029 to adopt, for the council to adopt an ordinance, changing the official zoning map to RM, multiple family residential in this area. And, um, that is my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from our, um, fellow commissioners?
I do have one question, this is Commissioner Gutierrez, um, I do see that the properties on the corner of Indiana and that street that's just on the north side, you can't see the name on the map, I'm in the middle of this area and I do see that there's three single family homes, but it's gone multi-family, so it's not gonna cause any issue for any of these multi-families or anybody else wants to build a single family, right?
Um, on the, well, on that particular property that has the three units, they're pretty much capped out, and, um, they're built a long time ago between, before the, the current zoning regulations came about in the 60s, in the early 60s, they have, if you were to come to us today, if it was, if this zoning went through, it, they have more housing units than what we would approve today, but that doesn't change anything, they, they would be able to, um, continue as is and would be able to get loans, they'll be, like everyone else, be, uh, able to tap their equity a little easier and would be, still be able to do repairs and upgrades, uh, but not add another unit. The other properties, so excepting that, that corner one, would, if this went through, would be able to add, um, a second unit, a full, a full second unit to the back, if they meet all other zoning requirements, and that would go to you as the Development Review Board if that were to happen.
Okay, and if they wanted to knock it down and build a single family though, that wouldn't be an issue?
That would not be an issue, right, actually that would allow them to do that if that was what they wanted to do, right, right now, they would, if they were to knock those buildings down, by today's rules, they would have to, only option would be to rebuild to commercial.
Yeah, cause on the northwest corner of Indiana, and I forgot that first street that's behind it, I think, it might be First Street, um, I, I do know that those, those three houses are fairly new and it's, and it's on multi-family right now, so that's why I was wondering if, if that was gonna be the same case with the properties on Somerset.
Oh, I know, yes, those were built not too long ago, they actually have their own planned development zone there, um, you know, if somebody wanted to do something similar, we could consider it, but keep in mind that this, that corner property at the northeast of Somerset, Indiana is a little smaller than the one you're, you're referring to.
Commissioner Gutierrez, if I could just add, um, you, you can do single family residential in a multiple family residential zone, so, um, if that was your question, that, that's not an issue.
Oh, perfect, yeah, that's what I was wondering, cause I know, the existing homeowners, if they wanna remodel or, or knock down, then, um, just wanted to make wonder if they were, had to do multi-unit, okay, now that's good, perfect.
Any other questions from our fellow commissioners?
This is Ernie, no.
No, none from Weisenberger either.
Okay, this, this is a, a public hearing, so do we have anyone that's in favor or opposed of the change, this change?
Uh, no comments in favor or opposed.
Okay, so now I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved, Vice President.
I'll second, Ernie.
Ernie, pardon? Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes. Okay, the next, um, is need a motion, um, to adopt Resolution Number PC 20030. Do I, can I do both at the same time John, or one at a time?
Uh, one, one at a time, uh, Commission Chair Abrego.
Okay, can I get a, um, a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC 20030, recommending the city council, uh, excuse me, the, the changing of the land use designation as the general plan use?
Uh, Commissioner Gutierrez, I'm motion to approve.
Okay.
Sparza will second it.
Thank you Sparza. Roll call please.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
The next one is the zone change number 236, the south resolution number PC 20029. Can I get a motion in favor, recommending that the city council adopt ordinance, changing the official zoning map?
Uh, Commission Chair Abrego, if you could open the public hearing and, and then ask for in favor, opposed, and then close it.
This is a public hearing for zone change number 236, resolution number PC 20029. Any questions from our commissioners?
No questions from Ernie, no?
No, none from Weisenberger.
No questions on my part, this is Gutierrez. Okay, any, anyone in favor or opposed?
No comments in favor or opposed.
Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing for the zone change number 236, resolution number PC 20029.
Uh, this is Ernie, I'll make, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Ernie?
I'll second it, Weisenberger.
Thank you, Weisenberger.
A roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Okay, so now we need a motion to approve, I'm motion to, go ahead. I'm motion to approve, this is Commissioner Gutierrez.
I'll second it, this is Ernie.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, John, for that. The next item is number five, the zone change, wait a minute, we just did that, excuse me, guys, number six. A request to amend the zoning ordinance to allow digital pricing on service stations, monument signs, and regulate digital window signs in commercial and manufacturing zones citywide.
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego, we are still working on the ordinance for this item, and it's recommended that you open the public hearing and continue it to the September 8, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
We'll keep, this is an open public hearing. You said we have no one that, or, but we'll just keep it open as a, for the next meeting, September 8?
Yes, if you could open and continue and have a roll call vote on that.
Okay, we can open this hearing and continue this, a public hearing. Can I, can I get a roll call?
We need a motion first.
I'll make a motion, excuse me, can I get a motion to? Can I make a? Motion to approve, this is Gutierrez. Thank you.
I'll second it, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie, roll call please.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Commissioner Weisenberger?
Yes.
Commission Vice Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Commission Chair Abrego?
Yes.
Next item is oral report?
Yes, Commission Chair Abrego and commissioners, at the city council meeting last week, there were several items that are of interest to the planning commission. So, at its meeting on August 4, the city council considered the zone change at 6500 to 6510, Alondra Boulevard, and this was to allow for the construction of 10 single family homes, and you approved that last month at your meeting. Second, the city council approved the development agreement for the digital freeway billboard, and that's adjacent to the 710 freeway north of Rosecrans Avenue, and you had a recommended approval of that development agreement at your meeting last month. And then finally, the city council awarded a contract to a consulting firm to prepare an update of the city's housing element, the health and safety element, and the preparation of a new element, and that is called the environmental justice element. And that was it, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our city attorney, John?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is John Kavanaugh, city attorney. One of the other actions that the city council took after our last meeting was they approved a package of two ordinances dealing with the street racing issue that is occurring within the city of Paramount. The city council approved one ordinance which authorizes the forfeiture of automobiles or vehicles used for street racing, and also, they, they approved an ordinance which allows law enforcement to cite spectators who are at the scene of the street racing event that are typically used to block traffic from interfering with the street racing. So, both of those ordinances have been adopt, have been approved, and they will be effective in September. From now until September, the city will be doing a campaign effort to let the community know what those ordinances are, and the ramifications for those who are violation of it. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, John. Any comments from our fellow commissioners?
I have a question about the street racing, Mr. Kavanaugh, this is Weisenberger. Does, does that include the circular donuts that we're seeing in many of the intersections around town, is that, would that fall under the heading of street racing?
Yes, Commissioner, that is exactly what we are targeting. An actual, under state law, there are two, there are two points that are identified under state law. The street racing, which is your typical, where you have point A to point B, and then the second part of that is what is known as exhibition of speed. We're using the exhibition of speed under the vehicle code to target those intersections which you're referring to, where, you know, they do these donuts around the intersection and cause damage thereof. So, that is precisely what we are targeting for the city of Paramount.
Very good, thank you for, for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
So, this is Ernie Sparza regarding that. So, what they'll do then is the ordinance and everything, what will they do with their cars, will they tow them, or, or what will that be?
That's a good, yeah, that's a good question, Commissioner. What will happen is, if a vehicle is identified as in violation of, of the ordinance, whether it's identified at the time of the event, or subsequently thereafter, and this is, this is going to be a challenging part, because we have to make sure that that vehicle was actually identified at the event. That vehicle will be towed and put into, obviously, storage in a tow storage area. The individuals who are the registered and legal owners of that vehicle will be afforded the opportunity to have a post-seizure hearing, to, in which case, a independent hearing officer will determine the validity of the seizure. Once, if the independent hearing officer validates the seizure, and the vehicle is in, is in storage, that vehicle will be in storage throughout the term of the proceedings, and if my office determines that we are going to determine that it is, falls within the forfeiture provisions of the ordinance, we will then file a petition with the court for forfeiture, and it'll be at that time that the court will either order the forfeiture or, or release the vehicle. If the court orders a forfeiture, that vehicle will then be taken out of storage and sold at auction, and the proceeds will be used to reimburse the city for all those expenses.
Very good, John, very good.
Yeah, it is, it is a good one, really, it is.
Okay. All right, guys, any comments from our staff?
Just apologize again for the mix-up on the call-in information.
Thank you, John. Okay, this, planning commission is adjourned, it is, our next meeting will be on September 8, at 6:00 p.m. Next.
Okay. This is Ernie Sparza. The Paramount Development Review Board is called to order. Roll call of members, please.
Board Member Abrego? Board Member Weisenberger?
Here.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Chair Sparza?
Here.
Okay, approve of it. Any public comments, new business reports?
Sir, do you want to approve the minutes first?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, that's right. Okay, item one is approve of minutes of July 14, I need a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from last time, this is Weisenberger.
This is Abrego, I'll second.
Okay, I need a roll call.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Weisenberger?
Yes.
Board Vice Chair Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Sparza?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, any public comments, new business reports?
No public comments.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Item two is comments, any comments from board members?
None, none from Abrego.
Staff?
None here.
Nothing from staff.
Okay, so the Paramount Development Review Board is adjourned till September 8, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, this is Gordon Weisenberger. The Economic Development Board is called to order. Roll call please.
Board Member Abrego?
Here.
Board Member Sparza?
Here.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Here.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Here. Okay, we need a motion to approve the minutes from July 14.
I'm motion to approve the minute, this is Commissioner Gutierrez.
This is Sparza, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Board Member Abrego?
Yes.
Board Member Sparza?
Yes.
Board Member Gutierrez?
Yes.
Board Chair Weisenberger?
Yes. Okay, any public comments or new business?
Uh, no public comments.
Okay, let's go to item two then, reports, please.
Uh, yes, Assistant Planning Director John King is going to give you an oral report on the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you, Board Chair Weisenberger and board members. This is a really brief presentation, just to give you an update on our assistance to, that's available now, applications are, are available now for small businesses. Applications, well, just to back up, so the CARES Act, as you know, Congress passes, and the, and the president signed this into, into law, and it has a number of different areas, but we got some money here to the local level, and you might recall that there were some funds available for residents, homeowners and renters, and this is another component, so we have this available, emergency small business assistance relief grant funds, so SBA relief grant funds. And there's a couple different types. One is for what are called small businesses, or are defined as small businesses, others are even smaller, micro businesses. A small business, well, we'll go, we'll start with micro business. A micro business is a business with, with less than five total employees, including the owner, and there is a provision that the owner or owners have to qualify, it's having a family income less than 80% of the area median income, and they have to meet all eligibility criteria. Small business can be up to 20 employees, so 20 or fewer employees, and that includes the, the owner. We have a total of $220,000 available, that's the total amount, and out of that, we're offering $10,000 grants. We've only, to date, have four applications in, so we theoretically, if, we can offer 22 grants to qualifying applicants. So, we're trying to get the word out, there's still time, Friday is the deadline. If we get more than that allotted amount, then we'll have a bit of a lottery, like, like we've done with the, with the housing assistance. So, if you'd like to get the word out, that'd be great, let everybody know in your, your personal networks. Do want to point this out, that eligible expenses of this program, program include rent, payroll, purchase of personal protective equipment, known as PPE, and business services to increase the capacity of the business activities. It can be toward, go toward setting up a, a website, improving a, an existing website, improving a point-of-sale system, so there's, you know, less contact between customers and, and the ownership and management. And that concludes my presentation, really, and if you have any questions, can take some, take them and answer them.
Yeah, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
We got any questions from our board members?
Uh, yes, this is Gutierrez, I do have a question. Do we exalt all the funds for the residential grant?
Um, I'll, I'll turn it over to John Carver, the short answer is no, and, but John can give some detail.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, I'm sorry, Board, Board Member Gutierrez. So, we, we had a, we were accepting, accepting applications for the rental assistance program. We received 67 applications, we have money to give to 51 people, so we have 51 grants to give, to give away. Right now, we're going through the qualification process to make sure that everybody has turned in the proper paperwork to ensure that they were affected by COVID. The other program we have for, for residents is the mortgage assistance program, and we were, we did the first round with the rental assistance, and we only received 16 applications. And so, we did a second round, because we, we have, again, up to, with this program for mortgage assistance, we have up to 50 grants to give. So, first round, we received 16 applications, and so we did a second round, which just closed on Friday, and we received an additional, I believe it was 14 or 15 applications. So, we'll go through the qualification process for the mortgage assistance, and then, if there's money left over, since the rental assistance program seemed more popular, we may do a second round for rental assistance.
Okay, so, so let me just make sure I understand, so you got 16 applications for rent, rental, and you opened up a second round for mortgages, and you only got 14 applications out of 50?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, so we had a first round, we had a first round for rental and mortgage. For rental, we received 67 applications, for the mortgage assistance, we received 16. So, because we only received 16 for mortgage assistance, and we can do up to 50 grants, we did a second round, and we received 12 to 14 applications for the second round for mortgage.
Oh, okay, okay.
Hope that's clear.
So then, so then, is, is that already, did that deadline close?
Yes, for the mortgage assistance, it closed last week Friday.
The, the only reason I'm asking is it seems like a very low number of applications.
Yes, we, we were surprised, the, the rental assistance, we received more applications than we have grants for. For the mortgage assistance, we did not receive more application than we have grants to give. So, it was a little surprising, but the rental assistance was significantly more popular.
So, was this advertised on like the city social media page? Because I know a lot of residents don't go on the city website, but I do know the city Paramount has a social media page on Facebook and Instagram, and I haven't heard about this in the community, or anybody speaking about it.
Yes, we did, we did significant advertising, not just on the website, but on all the social media platforms. We were doing multiple social media announcements about the mortgage and rental assistance. And additionally, for the, the, the second round for mortgage assistance, round for mortgage assistance that just closed last week Friday, we have the two electronic road signs and we were advertising on those road signs. One of them's on Paramount Boulevard. You may have seen that one. So we, we did do extensive outreach to the community. But again, the rental assistance was more popular than the mortgage assistance.
So the, so if there's not enough qualified applicants, are you gonna, so would the, the idea is to turn it back around and, and offer those extra funds back to rentals?
Yes, that is our thought right now. We haven't made that final decision, but we, it's something that we are considering.
Okay, that sounds good. Now, does the CARES Act, when they pass that law, does they say which, what amount has to be used each one, or is that up to the individual cities?
That was up to the individual cities to make that determination.
Okay.
Um, this is John King. I just want to briefly point out, I did not mention that for this small business alone and micro business, the applications are available online. That's the, the main way to get an application. And also by mail, there's a phone number, I'll just read into this in case anybody's listening, 909-784-1457. And residents or owners can also pick up an application at the planning department counter at City Hall during regular business hours. So just spreading the word.
Definitely. What's that deadline again for the business?
It's this Friday, close of business, 5:00, 5:00 p.m. on Friday.
Okay, we got any other questions?
No questions from Abrego. No questions for, for Ernie?
Okay. What about any other comments regarding these proceedings here from our board members?
None from Ernie.
Okay. What about comments from our staff?
Uh, nothing from staff.
Okay, then we will adjourn the Economic Development Board meeting for tonight, and we will meet again on September 8 at 6:00 p.m.